Well, good morning and welcome to our city council meeting. And just in case that there's someone out there that has missed out on the news over the last several months, it's election day. I know that's a bit of a surprise to some, but I think most of us are pretty happy that this day has come. And so we'll call this meeting to order. We're going to begin our meeting with an invocation from Tom Gerrots of City Church, Assembly of God. And following that, the Pledge of Allegiance, we invite you to join us for both of those. And it is so nice to have you here, Tom.
Thank you. Well, our nation, the White House Spiritual Leadership has declared the first Tuesday of every month, beginning today, to be a National Day of Prayer, praying for the leadership of our nation. We pray for the leadership of our state and for our city. Join me. In the name of the Lord Jesus, we pray, God, you bless our nation, protect its leadership, our state, and right here in our wonderful city, the largest city in Kansas, Wichita. God, we pray a blessing upon this mayor and the council, the leadership of our administration, the legal, the safety, the first responders, the educators, so many key people that make this city so important. And we ask, Father, for blessing upon our city, especially on this election day. We pray, God, that you drive back darkness, evil, and deception from our city. God, we pray for release of righteousness, truth, and justice. In the name of the Lord Jesus, bless our mayor, bless our city council members, give them wisdom as they make decisions to lead and guide our city. We thank you for those that are servants of our city, in both the legal, the justice, the educational, so many first responders and people that serve us as a city. Bless, protect, guide each one, we pray. We ask for this election day, God, for your will to be transpired, your will to be done. Speak to people as they vote, as they select the leadership of this city. And Jesus, we trust you to bless and guide today and throughout the coming year the wisdom necessary for the leadership of the city. Bless our mayor. Thank you for him, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, October 22, 2019. Any changes or corrections? A move that we approve those meeting minutes?
Second.
We have motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. We have one distinguished service award to hand out. So is Liz Owens with us? Well, good morning. Bob, you want to join us? I've got something I'm going to share here. So we have a distinguished service award to hand, citation to hand out, and I will read that here in a minute, but I want to give a little bit of background on Liz or Elizabeth Owen, who was born in Atlanta, Georgia. She attended St. Genevieve of the Pines Academy in Asheville and began her higher education at Colorado College and spent a few years in the West Indies. She then started her career in public service with the Master of Public Administration Program at Wichita State University. That program concluded with a year-long internship in the city of Wichita's Water and Sewer Department, which offered her the opportunity to translate theoretical knowledge into practical application, particularly related to finance and budgeting, personnel management, public relations, program development, and her departmental interactions. After the internship ended, she continued as administrative assistant, assistant to the director, the first female division manager for water distribution. She has been in that position for over the last 13 years. She then used her experience to help bring online a new customer information system and is currently finishing up some special projects. She chose this career because she was attracted to the goal of public service, to provide for the collective needs of the community efficiently, effectively, and responsibly. Congratulations. Thank you for your service, Liz, and I do want to share this. So a distinguished service citation. There is no way you're old enough to have spent 29 years here. 29 years of service, which is outstanding. Presented in recognition of dedicated and meritorious service rendered to the community and citizens of the city of Wichita for her 29 years of service with the Department of Public Works, we thank you and our city manager thanks you, and he has a little gift for you. You're allowed up to 45-minute speech. Would you like to share a few words?
I wasn't prepared to say anything, but I just, it really is an honor to work for the city. I mean, it's wonderful to, for all of those who do work for the city, to be able to provide the needs of a collective group of individuals is really, to me, a very special role. So I appreciate that I've been able to do that for the last 29 to 30 years and really appreciate the people I've worked with, and I know their dedication, and their always good intentions and best wishes and planning and devoting all their talents to serving the people of Wichita. And I'm really honored that I was able to be part of that. Thank you.
Yes. Shirley Starr, regarding Century Two.
Shirley Starr here?
That's her.
What's that?
I don't see her.
I don't see her either. So, well, I guess we'll go to the next.
Ruth Ann Kepsel, 25th anniversary of the Gingerbread Village.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Ruth Ann Kepsel. I live at 210 South Delrose in Wichita. I am the current president of the Wichita chapter of the Assistance League, and I'm here this morning to share with you a very momentous anniversary that is coming up at the end of this current week. And I'm speaking of the 25th anniversary of Gingerbread Village. Before I talk more about Gingerbread Village, I would like to just remind you a bit about what the Assistance League is and what we do for our community. We are a nonprofit organization. We are a part of the National Assistance League. However, we're the only chapter in the state of Kansas. We are 160 members strong here in Wichita. Every one of us is a volunteer. We have no paid staff for what we do in our community. We have four philanthropic programs, the largest of which is Operation School Bell. We have just finished our season of Operation School Bell. We brought 2,660 students, ages pre-K through 21, from the Wichita Public Schools, whose social workers referred their families to us because there was a need for assistance with school clothing. The families come to JCPenney's West, and they get the chance to pick out brand-new school clothes for the school year. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you remember, but a year ago, you and your wife happened to come to the JCPenney's West in the midst of a shopping session. We have 20 shopping sessions that are scheduled throughout August, September, and October. And over the years, we have provided clothing for 90,000 kids in the Wichita Public Schools. We also give scholarships to graduating seniors from the Wichita Public High Schools who want to pursue a technical program at either Butler or Wichita State Tech. We've given 278 of those scholarships. We also provide clothing for victims of sexual abuse, whether men, women, or children. We work with the Wichita Area Sexual Assault Center, who in turn works with two of our city's hospitals. We provide bundles of brand-new clothing and hygiene items so that those victims can leave the hospital in a dignified fashion, wearing clean clothing after they have had to undergo an examination. And finally, we provide teddy bears to children who are victims of violence. They get to choose a brand-new teddy bear to keep with them during the time of their examination. Sadly, last year, we had 241 child victims. We run a thrift shop at Douglas and Poplar, very close to East High. The thrift shop generates more than half of the money that we use to fund these philanthropic programs. We receive grants from companies in our community, from individuals, and we have fundraisers. 25 years ago, some of our members decided to do a special holiday event for the community that was called Gingerbread Village. Over the years, Gingerbread Village has been held at Plymouth Congregational Church, the Old Wichita Mall, the Sault Ste. County Extension, the Kiva downtown, the Wichita Boathouse, the Beach Activity Center. But for the last seven years, we have partnered with Exploration Place, and that has been our home. We are celebrating this coming weekend, the 25th anniversary. We're excited. Last year, 4,500 folks came and built a gingerbread house. We want to invite you, we want to invite everyone in the community to come and join us this year, if you never have before. We have wonderful sponsors. We have 150 additional volunteers from the community coming in to assist us in addition to our own members. At this time, I'd like to invite Chris Reed, who is one of the chairs of our event this year. We have a little special token for each council member, as well as an invitation to Gingerbread Village. We thank you for allowing us to come this morning, and we look forward to another wonderful event.
So Ruth Ann, thank you very much, and we remember you well. My wife and I were unbelievably impressed with the work that you were doing for the people in our community that we felt was a little bit hidden and, quite honestly, a little bit of a secret. So we hope that you continue to share the good work that so many in the community are doing, because to watch the people walk out of that store so that their kids could start school with, you know, decent clothing was phenomenal. Now, I will tell you, the chances of my wife running into anyone while shopping is very, very high. It's not that we have to pay rent over there, but I think she shops a lot.
I think she was there last week at the thrift shop.
So thankfully, she's probably not watching this because she's probably preparing to go out shopping. But no, we do appreciate phenomenal work that you all do in the community, and it's very much appreciated. And that's what I keep saying about our community, we have such generous people that want to make a difference, and your organization certainly is one of them. So thank you.
Well, we appreciate the chance to come.
All right, Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. I have one question, Ms. Ruth. Where did you say that thrift store was at?
It's at Douglas and Poplar. It's just one block, actually about a half a block, directly east of East High, at Douglas and Grove. There's a, we have a digital sign that's red, white, and blue right on the corner.
I know where that's at. Okay. Thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing you all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda items 1 through 27.
Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion or clarification? Seeing none, I move that we approve consent agenda items 1 through 27.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated November 4, 2019.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Today, I have the Board of Bids recommendation, as well as the open request for proposals with purchasing. First engineering bid we have is downtown fiber and signalization upgrades. Recommendation is Phillips Southern Electric for the base bid of $1,381,855. Add alternate one of $225,920 for an aggregate total of $1,607, excuse me, $607,775. Harry Street Bridge at Arkansas River, Don Leener &amp; Sons Construction for $4,225,125.35. 2019 OP-3 CIP micro-surfacing, Vance Brothers Incorporated for $1,356,614. Stormwater drain improvements to serve Ranch Second Edition, DLS Underground for $274,978.14. Water distribution system to serve the Ranch Second Edition, Mies Construction for $45,050. Paving and waterline improvements on Waco from Douglas and Central, Cornejo &amp; Sons 2020 inventory sidewalk maintenance deferred to November 18, Board of Bid date. Stryker Sports Phase Seven Parking Lot, Pearson Construction, base bid of $276,376.50. Add alternate one of $1,035. Add alternate two of $2,894 for an aggregate total of $280,305.50. Mobile printers and hardware, reject all bids. Articulating road graders, recommendation is Foley Equipment for Group One, base bid of $777,692. Group One, Option One, add $2,673. Group One, Option Three, add $4,060. Group One, Option Four, deduct $80,000. Group One, Option Five, add $621. Group One, Option Six, add $0. Group Two, base bid of $194,423. Group Two, Option One, deduct $20,000. Pebble Quicklime Bulk Delivery, U.S. Lime Company for $175.56 per ton. Fire hydrants, Wichita Wind Water Works for $82,735. Reprographic Services, no bids were received. Solidification and disposal of liquid waste, no bids were received. Polymer use in wastewater solids, Dewater Facility, Polydine Incorporated for $0.1920 per pound. Robeco Variable Frequency Drive Maintenance, Electronic Maintenance Associates for $90,320.29. 2020 Streetside Asphalt Paving, deferred to November 18, Board of Bids. Rock salt for snow and ice control, Hutchinson Salt Company, fine salt pickup of $22 per ton. Fine salt delivered, $34 per ton. Portable radios, Motorola Solutions for $136,000. APX 8500 vehicle radios with Motorola Solution for $51,000. That's all the bid recommendations. The open request for proposals, we have multi-factor authentication with ITIS, 2020 Actuarial Services with Finance, online auction services with Police, LW Clapp Park Master Plan with Park and Recreation, medical bill review services with Finance, NIC install groundwater remediation with Health, beverage services for golf courses with Park and Recreation, extended state providers for the RAB program with Housing, on-call consulting services with Transit, and vehicle fleet information software with Public Works. That's all the Board of Bid recommendations and current proposals. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Councilmember Claycomb?
Yeah, I have one question. The liquid waste item that we got no bids on, so what's the implication of that?
We currently still have a contract for it. It doesn't expire until the end of the year, so we actually have a new bid already out there to receive them.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have a question on Stryker Complex. So Phase Seven, I'm not sure what that entails. I think you're spending about $287,000. Didn't we allot $700,000 for that project? So what's left to spend, or did we? What are we getting?
I'm going to have Gary Janson come down.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. This specific phase, first six phases being what we did with fields and the indoor facility and everything that you see out there. This specific phase is for one additional parking lot, I think for almost 200 new parking stalls just to the north. Everything we had previously done with infrastructure had set up for this until the additional funding was available. So after this bid and including some contract services that we had to take care of, there still is funding available that we are going to spend some time with Scott Rigby and the operator and others to see what should come next. This right now is parking lot and striping of the existing lots.
So, but we set aside $700,000 for parking. So why did we set so much aside for parking if parking's only $287,000?
The $700,000 was never intended to be just for parking.
That's the way I took it.
And I apologize if that was presented that way. We knew that there were other improvements that would be needed, especially having worked with the operator during the first phases of the project. This was the first part of the $700,000 was to get this parking done.
Because that was some of the pushback in the community, Gary, is, man, you guys are spending $700,000 for parking. We should have never shared that we were spending $700,000 for parking. We should have shared that we'll probably spend, you know, under $300,000 for parking, but there's other things we want to do. So somebody's not messaging something correctly. There's a lack of communication somewhere. I'm just sharing now because I understood it, $700,000 was going for parking.
Yes, and we'll make sure we get that message clear going forward.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, my question wasn't for you, Gary. I'm glad that we put those requests for proposals out. Can we just state how somebody would apply for that or become a vendor with the city for anybody watching?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Could you repeat your question?
Could we just kind of say how somebody would apply for that or become a vendor with the city just for anybody watching at home?
Yes, we have a city procurement website that is available on wichita.gov under purchasing, under finance. You can click on the ep.wichita.gov, and you can register as a vendor there to register commodities and become notified of any solicitations that we have available. You can also see our open request for proposals, and you can also contact purchasing staff, and we'll get the specifications to them.
Awesome. Could we like add that as a slide after the request for proposals, just for anybody watching so they can see it and maybe follow the lines?
The process?
Yeah.
Sure. We'll get a standard slide. I don't know if Councilmember Fry wants to talk about this. We added that slide at his request to better explain what's in the pipeline and to be a little more transparent about the process.
You said perfectly. Thank you. All right. You done spending money today?
Hopefully.
So any other questions on this? A move that we award all bids is presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And I really do think that this is very beneficial. We started doing this, what, four or five months ago, six months ago? So where we're sharing now how people's dollars are being spent, because it's, at times, some pretty significant dollars being spent, where we used to just simply include this as a consent item, and I think it's good for people to see where the money's going. So, thank you. We appreciate it.
So you're stuck with me a little bit longer after the fourth quarter if you want me to present it?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, well, I'll get started on the infrastructure summary third-quarter report. Staff reports, weekly Board of Bid results at city council meetings. The city council approves a significant amount of funding for infrastructure projects. Based on feedback from the city council, a summary of the Board of Bid's activity is provided for the third quarter. So in the third quarter, city council approved infrastructure bids totaling $3,896,722.
Thirty million.
Thirty million, excuse me. Thank you.
Arkansas, Kansas.
Hi. I'll bid award total 36.2 million. Infrastructure bids represented 85% of the total bid awards for third quarter. Funds of variety of infrastructure projects included $5.4 million for water and sewer and $25.4 million for other public improvements. So in July, we had five bids totaling $1,152,353. In August, we had 15 bids for $5,988,826. And in September, we had 15 bids for a total of $23,755, excuse me, let me try that again, $23,755,543, for a total of 35 bids for $30,896,722. The funding source was special assessments for 15 of the bids for $4,166,162. Water utility for 3.5 of the bids for $2,291,510. Sewer was 7.5 for $3,187,273. General obligation was five bids at $21,251,777. We rejected four bids. Also, for the quarterly report, we added minority and EBE spending. So we had a total purchasing payments of $59,475,389. Of that, payments to minority and EBE vendors totaled $10,440,801. So the percentage of payments to minority and EBE vendors totaled 17.55%. That is all of the quarterly report, but that'll stand for any questions.
Outstanding. You want to have any questions on that?
Love it.
Again, that just is a tremendous way to share with people that we're investing, and oftentimes, that gets lost in there, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item?
Amendments to Section 4.4.4.5 of Code of the City of Wichita regarding the consumption of alcohol in parks for special events.
Good morning, Mayor and city council members. I'm Gentry Teason with the Park and Recreation Department. Today, I'll be speaking with you to Section 4.04.04.5 of the city code regarding special events in parks and the consumption of alcohol. The number of requests for special events in which attendees may consume alcohol in parks are increasing. This includes the Margarita Madness 5K in May, which was held in South Lakes Park, and was considered a huge success by the promoter in terms of attendees and revenue generation for them. State statute and city code prohibits the consumption of alcohol in most city parks, but KSA 41719 allows city council to grant exemptions on the properties that they hold title to. For each special event exemption, a one-time amendment to Title IV of the city code must be made to city council and written into the ordinance. This makes it quite a lengthy and complicated process due to the inconsistencies in allowance across park properties. Some, but not all, parks currently Some, but not all parks currently allow the consumption of cereal malt beverage or CMB and six percent alcohol, but an exemption to the ordinance has to be written for any other type of alcoholic liquor to be consumed. The proposed change to the ordinance would eliminate the one-time amendments that have been made previously for the special events in parks. A new amendment would exempt all park properties from the prohibition of the consumption of alcoholic liquor for special events only under these following conditions. If a community event permit, temporary entertainment district, or common consumption permit is issued, that will be approved by the city council as normal. If a community event permit is not necessary under city code, written permission of the Park and Recreation Director will be obtained. A license for the sale of alcoholic liquor has to be issued by both the state and city or a licensed caterer must provide notification of the sale of alcoholic liquor as provided by state law. And any lease or usage agreement on park property must have the conditions for the consumption of alcoholic liquor written into the agreement. This process is already in place on a permanent basis for five parks and all open public property within downtown areas, excluding streets, sidewalks, and alleyways as set by Section four-point-oh-four-point-oh-four-five B of the city code. Should this be approved and written into the city code, this proposed amendment would eliminate the need for exceptions on park property to be brought before city council for particular special events on a case-by-case basis. These instead would be approved by the Park and Recreation Director and written consent. Policy would stipulate the same permitting criteria as it currently is written in the community event application, including a map of the consumption area, detailed security arrangements, road closures if necessary, insurance, and all necessary licensing fees. This item was presented to the park board on June ten and received unanimous support to adopt the recommended ordinance change. It was also presented to and supported by the police department and park and recreation staff. The process would go as follows. Interested parties would fill out a community event application. If the criteria are met to issue a community event permit, arts and cultural services will coordinate with the event promoter for the event. If it does not meet the criteria of a community event but is a special event on park property, it will be forwarded to park and recreation staff for coordination. If that event will be serving or selling alcohol, the Park and Recreation Director must provide written approval in accordance with departmental policy. The financial and legal considerations are as follows. The sale of alcohol in parks may increase permit fee revenue to the general fund obtained through the city licensing office, but this is expected to be pretty minimal. The amendment has been prepared and approved as deformed by the law department. Our goal is to make the process of coordinating special events simpler and more time-efficient for park and recreation staff, arts and cultural services, and city council. It is recommended that city council place this ordinance on the first reading and authorize the necessary signatures. I will now stand for questions with Elizabeth Harlinski of the law department. Thank you.
Councilmember Claycomb?
I just have a question. Thank you, Gentry. You said this would make things easier here at City Hall, but it seems to me like it would also make it easier for people who are applying for community events, that they don't have to wait for all these different checkmarks that we go through now.
Sure, so it's still recommended in the community event application process that they file that sixty days before their event because the issuing of permits takes quite a while to process through. So planning in advance is still highly recommended for those permitting, but...
But they're not waiting for every one of those things that we do now?
It could be a simpler process for them as well.
Thank you.
And then councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just wanted to say that was a great presentation, going through the process and everything for anybody watching. I think this is a great step in the right direction to go ahead with this. I'm definitely gonna support it. I get requests for events all the time that involve stronger beer and stuff and they can't do it. And I think this can activate a lot of our parks that are maybe a little underutilized now. So I think this is great and a great presentation.
Very good. If there's no other questions, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Any other discussion? And this really cleans it all up so that we can have the events that we want to have. So, perfect. If there's no other discussion, I've moved that we take staff recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item?
Lease agreement with Friends University at Westside Athletic Fields.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Reviewing the lease agreement that we're working with the Friends University. A little background on that. A partnership between the city and Friends University took place in the past and they moved to Lawrence Dumas Stadium. Now they're looking to move back to Westside Athletic Field. Friends University will make some major improvements to the field, which include installation of the turf field on the infield as well as the foul lines there at the facility. Friends will be granting use of Westside Athletic Field and adjoining a grandstand and a parking storage area for maintenance there. And they will use the space for their collegiate games, practices, and potential tournaments. Anytime during the term, Friends University may also use space there with approval from the city for other tournaments and things that they may have as well. They will look at also doing some additional improvements, which will include new backstops, artificial turf on the surrounding field. City will continue to maintain the complex with the exception of the artificial turf repairs. To the artificial turf will be made by Friends University. City will be allowed to use the field that's currently using now for the USD two-five-nine games during March to April, March to May timeframe, once per week. The initial term for the lease will be for ten years with the option to extend for additional ten years. And it was approved by the park board commissioners in October as well. And here's a diagram of the actual space itself. If you look at the top right area is where the initial field at Friends will be making the investment of over three-hundred thousand dollars and putting an artificial turf on the infield as well as the foul lines there. They're also looking at options in the future to potentially use other space there, which may include turf at the softball field, potential soccer complex, as well as a potential indoor training facility. The initial investment by Friends will be over three-hundred thousand dollars. We will enter into an annual lease rate of one dollar per year. City will provide two-thousand dollars in electricity service for the premises for the first twelve-month period. The trash service that we currently provide will continue in place with any additional services that are needed for pickups that will be covered by Friends under your agreement. And the contract was approved by law and is recommended to the city council approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures. And we'll stand for any questions. And I also have the president here, as well as athletic director from Friends, that are available for any questions as well.
Any questions at this point? Don't appear to be any. We'll go out to the public. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Anyone just want to sing the praises of Friends University? Because I think this is outstanding.
My name's Robert Hamzirem. I'm the athletic director at Friends University. And we've appreciated the process, those of you that have weighed in, also Troy and Reggie and Mickey and the lot department as well. And we think this is as close to a win-win as we've seen where the city can continue using as-is. We get a field close to home. We can drive more traffic to that area. We're just very excited and grateful for the opportunity.
These are all athletes. They don't need to drive over there. They can jog.
We'll see.
Thank you. Any other? We'll bring discussion back to the bench. And we appreciate the patience of our folks over at Friends University, which is another outstanding institution that we're fortunate enough to have in our city. And they're making some tremendous improvements in this city. And we appreciate that too. Not only academically, but obviously you can physically go see some of what they've done for not only that neighborhood but the city of Wichita. And I think this will be another truly win-win for us because that's a field that we will continue to have need for in this city. And we will appreciate the improvements that you all are investing in. And we don't believe it'll stop there. We think there's more that we can do also and we can both enjoy that facility. So I'm looking forward to this partnership and truly seeing that facility have a little bit of a renewed life to it and some exciting things happening over there. So, love the work you're doing. Truly appreciate you guys a lot. And we heard it from the new president at WSU during his announcement last week that he is really looking forward to working with all of the universities in this city and true collaboration. And coming from the Research Triangle where it became commonplace for universities to work together, we think that that'll be a great partnership because we have some great universities in this city that can bring a lot to the table working together. So, councilmember Fry, and then I will hand it off to councilmember Claycomb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to reiterate the support and appreciation for Friends. This is not the first time that this will be their home field. Back when I was on the park board, Friends University did play their games at Westside Athletic Field. And they made significant improvements to the dugouts and the field itself at that time and maintained the field. And it was a great partnership. So I'm looking forward to the return to your new home field. And thank you for the investment and what it could mean for the entire park. So, thanks again.
I'll put a plug in for you before I hand it off to Cindy Claycomb. It doesn't mean we can't try and work in a game at that new baseball stadium. We'll make something special happen.
Councilmember Claycomb?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I really appreciate this. I think this is a great partnership, having Friends back at Westside Athletic Field, and really appreciate the investment that you're willing to make into that facility. So I want to move that the city council approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all and thank you for being here today. We appreciate that.
Madam Clerk, next item?
Wichita Transit and Wichita State University memorandum of understanding.
Good morning, Mayor, councilmembers. Mike Tan from Transit. Our school year nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty MOU is up for renewal. Wichita State has graciously agreed to continue the relationship that we started last January for the spring semester for the entire school year nineteen and twenty. So I wanted to provide you with some background on how we originally started back in January of two thousand nineteen. We initiated a Route two-oh-two, which was a hybrid grid route. It does not go to the Transit Center. It runs up and down Oliver. It begins at the south campus on Harry and continues all the way up to the Metroplex and runs down through the campus so that there's connectivity for students for all of those facilities, whether it's for parking or for education or to get back to main campus to where it is. They have amenities there. We also have another route that we have and had for many years, Route twenty-one, which actually covers the Old Town Campus, the main campus, the Metroplex, and also WSU Tech at Fortieth and Webb. The funding for operating assistance for the spring semester was a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. The Route two-oh-two is basically described there, as I said to you. We start every day at the Metroplex, picking up students that are parking there, taking them to WSU's campus, and then continuing down Oliver and then down to the WSU South Campus. Obviously, you all know Oliver well. That is, there's a lot of population there. There are a lot of lower-income families that live there. There's a lot of shopping opportunities. And Oliver is a place that we've been looking to try to get service out. Again, in a grid-type method like that, it connects... You can see the routes that it connects with. Route twenty-nine, Route twenty-four, Route twenty-five, Route twenty-seven. And it also connects with Route twenty-one. So there's a lot of connectivity on the grid system without having to get back to the Transit Center. Route twenty-one, again, this is a longstanding Wichita route. Starts at the Transit Center and then continues through the downtown up to the main campus, travels through the campus over Twenty-first Street, and then we matriculate our way up to the Wichita State Tech Complex at Fortieth and Webb. For the last school year, we had a total of twenty-eight thousand trips taken by WSU students, faculty, and staff on Wichita Transit routes. That was through the end of the school year and up to date, actually to September of two thousand and nineteen. To date, our ridership is thirty-three thousand. So we've added another four thousand trips, over four thousand trips in one month. We've seen a lot of usage increase as we've gone along. The trip information for Route two-oh-two, we had eighty-seven total trips. This was in the spring semester. Eight-hundred-and-fifty were made by WSU students and staff. Seven thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty were made by citizens of Wichita, which shows that obviously that is an area that we anticipate a significant amount of growth. And then obviously the six campuses of Wichita State that currently sit on all of our fixed routes. One of the things that I did want to bring out is what we've currently seen so far with this school year, particularly in Route two-oh-two. If you look at what we experienced last semester, about ten percent of the ridership was WSU students. We are now up to six hundred student trips per month on Route two-oh-two alone. So obviously this school year... And I think that speaks volumes to the Communications Department at Transit and also with the city to reach out. So the students now know they're coming onto campus, especially the freshmen. We had a tremendous outreach program over the summertime to get information into the hands of the parents and students of what's available to them with Wichita Transit. So the fact that we saw over four thousand total student trips taken in October and we're seeing six hundred trips on Route two-oh-two alone, I think we're going in the direction Wichita State wants to see that it happens. So we're hoping that you approve and allow us to continue that relationship. And as it continues to grow, obviously we'll continue to look at what other funding sources we can bring into play to help the overall ridership and overall service for the citizens of Wichita. So with that, I'll stand for questions. And obviously, we ask for approval of signatures for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty agreement.
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll go out to the audience. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Councilmember Tuttle?
Great job. Thank you for the presentation. Also, thank you for coming up with an innovative solution to help students. And not only is it helping students now today, but I think it's also creating the next generation of ridership and riders in our community. So thanks for that. And then on an unrelated note, thank you too for your work and for your team's work to make sure that everyone who wants to vote today can have free transit rights. Would you want to say anything about that for the community as well?
Well, obviously, this is a very big day for everyone. It always is. And we want to make sure that we're providing, as part of what it is that we do, is to make sure that people have the ability to get to the polls and to get back safely and hopefully maybe make that first trip on transit and see what it's like and continue to use it for other reasons, which is again, much like this agreement and the agreement we have with USD two-five-nine and what we try to do, it's a building block. And it's gonna take a while to build those blocks. But as we start to develop a grid and we start to get these types of things where people see us as providing, again, like today, providing that level of service, hopefully that'll have positive impacts for us.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you. You know, certainly it's challenging to come up with the funding that we need to make a more robust transit system, but I feel good about the direction we're heading in. And you're right, adding just a route here and there that's more of a semi-grid system makes a big difference. There's a lot more connectivity and they're not having to transfer all the way back downtown. And so we appreciate the partnership tremendously. And I would move that the council approve the continuation of the Wichita Transit and Wichita State University memorandum of understanding.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Mayor and council, I'd just like to thank you for all of your support for the last year and a half that I've been here. The meetings that we've had and the type of cooperation that we've had from the bench has been fantastic. Thank you very much.
No, thank you, Mike.
Glad to have you.
Madam Clerk, next item?
Fleet heavy equipment replacement and snow equipment replacement.
Good morning, everyone. Ben Nelson, Public Works and Utilities. Today, we're recommending approval of two of our CIP project budgets. Both are targeted toward replacing aging equipment that we have that is in use by our frontline personnel. The first of those line items is a normal annual recurring budget that we have in our CIP. Every year, due to age and condition of assets, we see increasing downtime for large assets that are used primarily by Public Works and Park and Recreation. Some of our divisions like flood control... Some of our divisions, like Flood Control, Street Repair Crews, the Traffic Control Crews, and the line markings that we do, for example, those pieces of equipment have higher levels of downtime, and we have to replace them on an annual basis. There's a total investment budgeted in the CIP of $34 million over the next 10 years. $2 million of that is budgeted for 2019. That's what we're seeking approval of today. And one of the things we've done, I'd also want to mention, if this gets approved, we'll move forward with the replacement program, but something else we've looked at in the last few years, in lieu of replacement, is a refurbishment program where when we have assets that have, say, structural steel that can last another 10, 15, 20 years, we go and rehab that part of the asset, get new components put into it, and we basically get a like-new piece of equipment with a warranty that's equal to what we'd get if we purchased it new, but we get it for about 30 or 40% of the cost of if we just replaced the thing outright. So, when it's appropriate, we're going to look at refurbishment again. We've saved about a little more than $1.5 million on the heavy equipment refurbishment the last few years, so we'll continue looking at that as an option in lieu of replacement as well. The second item we're seeking approval of is a pretty substantial investment in our snow fighting equipment. We have dozens of snow plows and material spreaders, which is what drops the salt and sand mix when we have our winter storm responses, that over the next year or two will be coming up for replacement. So, we've got $2 million budgeted for an investment in snow and ice equipment replacement. We're also listing here some snow blower loaders that we're looking at. Potentially, that may change to brine tank replacements or looking at some wing plows for some of our tandem axle dump trucks. But again, what this is doing is an investment to make sure that our snow fighting equipment will be able to service for the next 15 years or so. So, to conclude, two budgets in the CIP for 2019, roughly $2 million for heavy equipment and another $2 million for our snow and ice equipment that we're seeking approval of today. Thank you for considering it, and I can stand for questions.
Questions? We, Ben, we appreciate you being a little bit frugal and saving where you can save. We call it the Vice Mayor Blue Ball Method for pinching pennies.
We'll start calling it that in the presentation.
Exactly, exactly. So, we'll go out to the audience. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing no one, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench, and I would move that we take the staff recommended action.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Hess Pump Station Dehumidifier Replacements.
Boy, this is exciting stuff.
Important stuff.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item before you is replacement of a dehumidifier system for Hess Pump Station. It's the city's primary high-service pump station that pushes finished drinking water out into the distribution system for delivery to customers. The pump station is located on Museum Boulevard near the main water treatment plant. The dehumidification system protects vital pumping equipment, electric motors, electric panels, electronic controls, and plumbing within the moist environment of the pump station. The picture before you shows an example of the electrical panels and equipment that are located on the upper floor of the pump station above the pump galleries themselves. The existing six units were, it's original equipment that was installed in 1974 when the pump station was built. They've been repaired and rebuilt over a number of years for their service life. We're at a point now where the parts are obsolete and rebuilds are no longer feasible, and so it's time to replace those to provide the ongoing needed protection. The adopted 2019 through 2028 CIP includes a half million dollars to fund this project. And at this time, I'd like to provide staff's recommendation to approve the project, approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. Thank you, and I'll stand for any questions at this time.
Thank you, Don. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll go out to the audience. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Any other discussion? I move that we take staff recommended action.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Clarification. Don, in the green sheet, it says, "Two of the original dehumidifiers are running from parts salvaged from the four that are inoperable." So, of the six right now, only two are running?
That's correct.
How long will it take these new ones to get installed?
Probably a couple of three months, something like that, 90 days. And it's not that we're going to have an immediate catastrophic failure because of these down. You know, it's through time that you see the damage, and there's other things that we can do in the meantime, you know, to make sure that we're staying on top of maintenance of the sensitive equipment.
So, are those recent pictures you shared?
Yes.
Because that's an incredibly clean-looking plant.
Yep.
Because they're maintaining it, keeping it running.
That's solely because of you, right?
Yep, thank you.
That's outstanding. So, motion to take staff recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. It was a good-looking plant, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item.
Lift Station Rehabilitation.
Long time no see. The item before you involves rehabilitation and replacement of sanitary lift stations. The city owns and operates 67 sanitary lift stations. In addition to the ongoing routine maintenance and repair of the lift stations, the City Treatment Division also implements a capital improvement program for long-term rehabilitation and replacement of aging systems. The work for rehabilitation and replacement is scheduled according to a risk-based approach that was identified in a 2017 condition assessment. The two projects before you today involve replacement of a system along West Kellogg between 151st and 165th Street, and there's another lift station located near 119th and Central that will be rehabilitated. The West Kellogg system involves four lift stations, three of which will be eliminated. The remaining lift station will be upsized to provide the necessary pumping power, and those remaining systems will be converted to gravity sewer. The 2017 assessment found that this was a high-risk area. All of the assets, including the lines themselves, had aged. They didn't have the needed capacity to account for future growth, and so the new system will account for that. The other lift station is located near 119th and Central Avenue. It's in poor condition, has high consequence of failure because of the size of the service area that it serves there. Lack of other lift stations that we see as they age, controls become outdated, concrete structures deteriorate, and then other appurtenances and equipment related to the functionality of the system are also in need of rehab. And so, the adopted 2019 through 2028 CIP includes $1.2 million in funding for year 2019 for replacement of, or for lift station improvements. The table on the slide shows the breakdown of how those funds will be applied to these two projects. $980,000 in funds is needed to finish up the West Kellogg system, and $220,000 in funds is needed to refurbish lift station number 18. So, at this time, I'd like to provide staff's recommendation to approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Any questions? My only question is, why is this a charter ordinance to replace lift stations?
Because it involves utility revenue bonds.
Okay.
And that requires a five.
Yeah, I saw that. Requires a supermajority. All right. Just found that to be odd. All right. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing no one, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Any other discussion? Move that we take staff recommended action.
Second.
Motion and a second. Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Funding for Hoover Road Multi-Use Path from Zoo Boulevard to 29th Street North.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. Now, the item before you this morning is a request for construction funding for a multi-use path on Hoover from Zoo Boulevard to 29th Street North. This project was previously in front of the council in April of this year for approval of the design concept supplemental design agreement to continue the design and the revised budget at that time. Just as a reminder, the project will include a multi-use path along Hoover from Zoo to 29th, and I'll show you a map of that in just a moment. And that includes a traffic and pedestrian signal at Zoo Boulevard. We expect the final design to be completed early next year, and most likely will construct in phases with the signal going first and then the path to be completed later once the right-of-way is in place. The adopted CIP includes funding for bikeways and bike improvements in 2019, including $1 million specifically for this project. That would bring the total budget to $1,214,250 pending your approval today. Just to show you real quickly again what this path looks like, the part in red has already been completed. A section of it south of 29th Street was funded by special assessment by the adjacent development, and then going north from there to K-96 was actually done by private project. What we are asking to do is complete the connection that is shown in blue. At each end here on the left, the Cedric County Park, and to the right would be the city's future Crystal Prairie Lake Park. This path will serve a significant amount of residential development, a lot more than is there right now than you see in this aerial, in that there's more plats in the area and a lot more expected to come in the future. So, with that, I'd ask that the council approve the revised budget and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions? Seeing none, we'll go out to the audience. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench, and I do think it provides great connectivity, especially to two what I would call destination parks that is going to be a big plus. So, Councilmember Claycomb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we don't have any discussion today, but we've had lots of discussion about this path, and we had lots of public meetings. Public Works heard concerns, addressed questions, so I appreciate that. I'm glad we've gotten to this point where I'd like to move that the City Council approve the revised budget, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Janson. You did a fine job. Compliment him, and he just walks away.
I know.
Try and say good things. Madam Clerk, next item.
Housing Choice Voucher Audit Finding.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Sally Stang from the Housing and Community Services Department. Today, I have for you, for your review, two audit findings that came forth from our single audit that was submitted to HUD on September 27, 2019, as part of the financial data submission to the Real Estate Assessment Center. The audit was completed by Alan Gibbs and Hulick, and they cited two findings readdressed by HUD. Audit finding 2018-1 related to the auditor found two participants admitted to the program in fiscal year 18 were above the low-income limit. Staff responded at the time. It was due to inadequate training of new staff. A checklist was developed to assist staff with that. Additional training has been provided, and the computer system has been updated to flag applicants that are above the limit, so we don't expect that issue to arise again. Finding 2018-2 relates to the utility allowance schedule and application of utility allowances in the program. HUD mandates that a review of utility allowances occur each year, and that allowances are adjusted for rates that increase by more than 10%. The auditor found that the trash utility allowance rate had increased, and the schedule had not been adjusted to reflect that increase. And in addition, they found that wrong utility allowances were being placed on accounts where the bedroom size of the unit did not match the voucher size. Now, they had changed the regulation about five years ago, and it now requires us to apply the utility allowance for the lesser of the bedroom size or the unit size, which was different than in the past, where we were required to apply the utility allowance for the unit size itself. The software update had not been applied for that change in regulation. It has since been applied, and the system automatically applies the correct utility So, at this point, we just ask that you receive and file the Wichita Housing Authority Audit Finding so we can respond back to HUD. I stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions? They're being way too agreeable today. We'll go out to the audience. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? And seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Move that we receive and file audit finding.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
2020 Street Side Paving and Asphalt Project, Dwight D. Eisenhower National Airport and Colonel James Jabara Airport.
I'm Mayor and City Council John Oswald, Airport Engineering and Planning Manager. Today's a budget request item. On both Eisenhower and Jabara Airport, we have a street and parking lots project listed locations. Majority of the locations, but not all of them necessarily. Map of the site shows on Eisenhower Airport some preservation work and some rehabilitation work on the streets and parking lot system. The south end of Jabara Airport, Jabara Road, has a pavement preservation component to it. Certified engineering design was selected through the interview process to provide engineering services. The design will occur this fall and will open bids early 2020 to, once the weather breaks, to have a spring start of construction on the airports. Budget request today is $1,072,152, and as always, the project will be paid for by airport funds. It's recommended that Wichita Airport Authority approve the project budget. I have a heap of questions.
Questions? Seeing none, we'll go out to the audience. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. And any other questions, comments? Move that we approve the project budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Any appointments, comments today? I do want to give, well, we'll get to that here in a minute. Councilmember Claycomb?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to pay a little tribute to Joan Cole, who died last week. She served on City Council District Six Representative about 18 years ago when she ended her term, and she had quite a long list of accomplishments that she made as a council member, and then even when she left the council, continued to work for the betterment of this city. She was 85 and really had just a wonderful life, and her service was on Saturday, and there was a very large crowd there, so just wanted to pay tribute to her.
Thank you. Outstanding. Appreciate you sharing. Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to encourage everybody watching to get out and vote today, and if you have friends that cannot get to the polls, remember we have free transit, so I encourage people to get out and vote.
Absolutely. Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is that time of year where most people think I did not shave.
You don't.
It is on purpose. It is No Shave November, and remind men over 50 to get their prostate checked, cancer awareness. And I'm one of those over 50 now, so.
That's great. Great PSA. Councilmember Clendenon?
Well, I had to get started early on mine, so I'd have enough to look like I didn't shave.
This is a week. It takes a while.
No, I wanted to make an appointment, Mr. Mayor. I need to make an appointment to the CSBG Board, and I wanted to appoint Paul Farha.
Okay. All right. I move that we accept Paul Farha to the, you said, the CD?
CSBG.
CSBG Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. I do want to give a shout-out. We have a outstanding staff in the council office, and so Lynn Matzler got us all I-voted cookies today, and so I just think that's a pretty cool way to encourage people to get out and vote, and so thank you, Lynn, for the special treat today, and we encourage everyone to exercise something that's pretty precious, and that's the opportunity to get out and vote. Not sure people do that enough, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know that normally the city manager isn't allowed to speak during this time, but I thought maybe you'd like to hear something. What Gary told me when he was leaving, and you were giving a rare compliment, was... What Gary told me when he was leaving and you were giving the rare compliment was that KDOT announced this morning that we received funding for our request to advance the next phase of the North Junction.
Oh, that is outstanding.
And we're still looking, we're still working with them to determine what that amount was. We requested $24 million. The city and county were going to split the local share then for a project of $31 million.
And that is, that is great news, and he was going to hide that from us?
We just heard at 9:30, so.
You know that?
Not hiding it, this is the time to announce it. There were over 100 projects that were submitted by jurisdictions around the state, so it was very competitive.
That is terrific and truly a tribute to staff that's been working on that quite a bit and sitting down with our friends up there in Topeka, as you and I and Gary and some others sat down with them when we had the local consult and had an opportunity also, and so it's a great project that the entire region rallies around, so that's, that is great news to share, that we're going to get some additional financial support to fix one of the remaining ugly interchanges in this city, and people are truly appreciating what's happening on Kellogg, and, you know, I, there's going to be a whole generations, obviously, following us that will never even see pictures of that death spiral that existed out west, that was just, and it's just so easy to navigate through there, and eventually that north exchange is going to be very similar, easy to navigate through there, so anytime you have good news, Mr. Manager, you just feel free to jump in.
I will. I do think it's appropriate that we thank the secretary and her staff for the work that they put into this, working, encouraging us to apply, but also Senator McGinn.
Absolutely. I know Senator McGinn's been working on this quite a bit, and we owe a tremendous thanks and debt of gratitude to all of those that you mentioned, so that's outstanding. I move that we adjourn today's council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn. Cast your vote. Motion passes. We are adjourned.